Welcome everyone to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioner meeting for October 4th, 2022. At this time, we'll have the invocation and the pledge, and I'll do the invocation if everybody will stand. Our heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for another blessed day in this county, Lord, and we want to just pray for all the people that lost their lives in the hurricane and the people that lost all their belongings, their houses, and everything that it meant to them. Lord, please just bless all the people that's there to help and try to put everybody back to normal. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'll start with approval of minutes. Item number one for the September 19th, 2022 workshop, September 19th final budget hearing, September 20th regular board meeting, and September 26th emergency meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynn.
Under 1C, I've already mentioned it here to the clerk, Mr. Eric, on page 380, there's just a typographical error which he's already corrected. Under the third paragraph, it says Commissioner Fleming moved and the motion carried unanimously. That should be Mrs. Commissioner Fleming seconded. Just minor typo. I made the motion, Mr. Fleming seconded.
Any other issues or discussion?
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, I mean, motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Lynn, all in favor, aye?
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, we're pulling item number five for discussion and item number nine for discussion, which will be tied to the additional, excuse me, additional agenda item. We'll talk about all that at the same time, so... Is there any discussion items two through four and six through eight and 10, or do I have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, approval of procurement for a grapple rake and rake disconnect coupler for the new CAT 950 wheel loader. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the only thing we really need to do today, if you will entertain it, is approve the installation of the disconnect, quick disconnect couplers on the machine. Do not approve the grapple. We've got some other options that we're looking at, but some of them don't fit right now into a pre-bid contract, so we'll have to bring that information back. But for now, if we can just go ahead and get the quick disconnect couplers put on the machine, that's all we need.
Do we have any idea how much extra that is?
I think it's $12,204.
That sounds right.
Now, is that just spread over the period of the lease?
Or? Yes. It is spread over the period of lease. $12,500, I think is what it is.
The third valve?
Third valve, hydraulics.
Okay.
Twelve five.
Okay. Just so the rest of the board understands and the public, what we're doing here is there's a grapple and an attachment that goes with this loader, and there's some options on either purchasing instead of leasing the grapple for long-term use, so we're going to come back, circle back on that at the next meeting and decide what's the best way to go with that.
Well, I think too, Mr. Chairman, and you and I discussed it, I'll just share it with everybody. If we go ahead and buy the grapple ourselves outright and own it rather than being a part of a lease, then as we get new machines going forward over the years, we still have the grapple. That grapple is real important when you have a storm event where everybody's out clearing trees off the roads, but at this point, we'd be better off probably just owning one, and I think we're going to come out better that way.
May I have a question?
Mr. Fleming.
Would that interchange with another grapple?
Yes, sir. That's the idea.
Smart. Goodness. Mr. Chairman, have a second.
Anybody else?
No. For motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynn, all in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Item number nine, authorization to apply for a grant for a multi-use building which has specific uses for five years. Mr. Lynn.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, honestly, I'd like to table this for a couple of reasons. One, I'm the chairman of the LTPT, and on page, on page three of this backup information, yeah, the third page, fourth paragraph, it says, "The local planning team will assist communities with identifying critical needs and identifying eligible projects. LTPs are familiar with the local communities and are acutely aware of the challenges and barriers faced by Florida's small-capacity-constrained communities." As chairman of the LTPT, we haven't discussed this whatsoever in our planning meetings. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 27th. I've also spoken to administration at River Oak today, and they weren't aware of this. I've reached out to Career Source Florida, who's named them as a partner, I guess, if you will, in this grant as a subrecipient. It says right there in paragraph three, "Subrecipients will be required to partner with the Career Source Florida Local Workforce Development Board." They're not aware of this. I'd like to table this, so we have an opportunity to discuss this at our LTPT meeting with Career Source at the table, as well as River Oak, to better our application, if you will, and get letters of support from them, but to have them at the table prior to us making this application. And that goes along with agenda item number two. I just think we need to run this through the proper channels, and the LTPT is specifically named in this information packet, and we have yet, we have not discussed that there.
You talking about item two, additional agenda items?
Yeah, I think that goes along with agenda, consent agenda number nine. I think they're, that's talking about the same one, because it's the CP, CPF, I think that's why they named it.
Mr. Harris, additional item number one and two apply to item number nine?
No, number two.
Just two.
Just number two.
It refers back to number nine. It's the resolution.
So I'd just like to table this. Our next, Commissioner Norris is here, I think. October 27th is in our next LT, Local Planning Technology Team is what that stands for.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's October 27th.
That is correct.
So I'd like to table that until we can discuss this at the, there's members of River Oak on our LTPT and other community members as well, but I'd like to bring Career Source to the table and discuss it through the LTPT along with River Oak.
Any other discussion? Mr. Harris, do you have anything?
I'm just going to make a brief comment. If you're going to meet that soon, we should be okay. I'm anticipating that we'll be okay. The problem that we're experiencing right now is that some of the stuff that's being made available through the federal government, they tell you, like they did in here, they're going to open a window for application, and then they close it within three weeks. So if y'all are going to meet that soon, we should be okay. We've already called, and we've tried to talk to people in Tallahassee about this program. In fact, if you read through the whole thing, you'll realize that they're saying that they don't even have the staff to put it together yet, and that they're going to be trying to create staff for this program. And this has become a major problem with a lot of these funding proposals that come. We had one recently where they sent us a notice of funding opportunity, and then they closed it within a couple of weeks, and they didn't give anyone, actually, I think they gave someone plenty of time to apply, but they didn't give everyone the same amount of time. So if you want to pull it, that's fine. What is interesting in this one, though, is that the uses are limited to those that are listed on, these pages aren't numbered, but I'd say about page six or something, type and number of features in the multipurpose community facility. These uses would have to be in place for at least five years. You'd have to demonstrate that they're going to be in use for five years. One would be a classroom, another is a computer lab, multipurpose space, telemedicine room, other, and they give you an option to explain. One thing they're not clear on here, and there are several things here that are not very clear, I don't mind saying that, but this, again, because of what's been going on of late, you have to work with whoever they end up putting in place to be the staff to try to answer some of these questions, once they get trained up in the state and federal government agencies to try to respond to your questions. But some of these things, they're just not real clear on what they're actually funding, because you're talking about construction of a building, but then they start talking about program funding. You've got a schedule here of program budget for multipurpose community facility program. My question is, none of those lines in there speak to construction. So my curiosity is whether or not they're going to provide money to operate these various functions that are listed, that they require you to operate in this building for five years. After the five years that you're building, you do with it what you want to, but they're saying that it has to be in place for five years. So those are the things, though, that if your group is going to meet and discuss, those are the things that have to be in that building for five years.
Yes, sir. I'm not against the project whatsoever. I went to DEO's website, and there's a breakdown, there's $366 million as a total allocation of that. There's $86,933,757 dollars for multipurpose community facility projects. I'm assuming those are actually buildings. There's $13 million for digital connectivity technology projects. There's $247,761,000 for broadband infrastructure projects. So I just want to pump the brakes a little bit, run it through the LTPT, and let's better our application and get letters of support from Career Source. You know, like Mr. Harris said, through the classroom-type setting stuff, if we could partner with River Oak, and they could potentially use this building for part-time to help satisfy that five-year need of some type of classroom structure through one of these qualified educational programs for the workforce, along with Career Source. I mean, I think it'll just better our application. I just want to pump the brakes a little bit and get a solid application together.
Yeah, we have spoken to Kerry Waldron as well about the telemedicine piece of this thing, and they've got some other classes that they would like to work on, some different things with the communities as well. I don't mind telling you, my first thought for this building was out there where the Douglas Center was, because I think if you look at all the other criteria that are in here, that community will help us meet the criteria requirement in that location. But in any event, that's fine. I don't have any problem bringing it back.
Yes, yes, sir. I don't, I don't disagree with any of that, but what I want to do is get, we're going to need, if we're going to meet some of these classroom educational-type settings, we're going to need some of those other agencies on board, and I just want to, you know, have their support moving forward to help satisfy those should we win the grant or be awarded the grant. I don't think you win them.
Any other discussion? Are we good to pull it to the following meeting?
I'm okay with pulling it, but that's...
Okay.
I would probably lean on Shannon and Mr. Norris. They're kind of my, I guess, co-chairs, if you will, to help us gather some information so on the October 27th meeting, we got a solid, maybe we could reach out to Liberty or Mr. Grissom and see if there's any other, you know, things they're hearing that we could maybe talk about or make sure we get, don't get the wagon in front of the horse.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I got a question, and I don't see it any, is there a minimum or maximum of partners to have working with us on this?
No.
I mean, maybe the college, you know, if it would help, the more support we had.
Yeah.
Just thinking.
I'd include anyone if it helps our application.
Right. So I just mentioned that, so as you go, you might want to talk to others as well.
All right. If everybody agrees, we'll bring that back. Moving on to additional agenda item, item number one, authorization to apply for local assistance funds and adoption of resolution authorizing county administrator to execute all associated documents. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Pravat thinks that we need to add some language in here, and I'll just tell you that it was in the original notice. What the federal government is calling this program is actually a local assistance and tribal consistency fund. Our portion that we'd be applying for is local assistance, but in any event, based on the schedule they sent out, we would qualify for $50,000 per year for two years, and this does not have a lot of strings attached. We can use it for just about any purpose.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynn.
Is that 50,000 for us?
Twice. Hundred thousand dollars.
Twice, yeah. Annually.
Correct.
Mr. Lynn.
I would move to approve contingent on the addition of the language our county attorney sees fit.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
I just want to emphasize one thing. On page two of what we just discussed, that multipurpose building, not including the cover page, if you go to page two, the second paragraph down, I take this as a warning to anyone that's going to apply for this, okay? It says that the office will publish a notice of funding opportunity identifying eligible communities, amounts available, maximum awards, and other requirements. The application and scoring matrix will be included in that notice. Eligible communities will be able to apply for funding during an open application window of no less than 30 days. Now, they know they've been receiving some criticism of giving these very brief notices, so they could cut this thing off at 31 days. I would just plan at this point to have everything that we're going to need available when they send that notice out. I don't know if this is competitive, and we're competing with a lot of other communities, but I will say that we will be working, in fact, we already are. Brenda's working on this in our office, and we're going to try to reach out. Commissioner Lynn, if you know of any entities that you want us to reach out to and talk to, so that we're not waiting until the end of October, so that we can get ahead of this thing and start putting an application together, I hope we can try to get that done.
Mr. Harris, I think we have plenty of time. I mean, it says there on page four, five, five, one.
I was reading that.
Yeah, it says, "The office will award all funds before October, or before December 31st, 2024, and ensure all projects are completed by December 31st, 2026." We're in 2022. I don't think they're going to shut this off in 30 days before October 27th. I mean, that would mean they're going to sit on applications for two years before they award them. I think we'll be okay, but I see your point, so we will start moving forward.
I'd rather plan that they're going to be briefer than longer.
I understand.
Because we've seen them do it before. But anyway, we're fine. We'll, we'll still get with you and any agencies you think we need to talk to, let's go ahead and all of us start trying to communicate.
As the chairman of the LTPT, I'll get that ball rolling tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to commissioner items, are there any commissioner items?
Did be addressed.
Mr. Attorney, any county attorney items?
No, sir, not this evening.
I'm sorry, I already did the additional agenda item, item number nine, public concerns and comments. Anybody wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Wayne Hannika, 11883, 93rd Road, Live Oak. With all the turmoil that goes on in this country and the craziness that happens politically and the people that have just gone through a hurricane, Eric's going to bring up a video of one of our local people that lost part of his leg almost exactly four months ago. And I saw this video just before we got here. It's just awesome sometimes to know that God is still good. This is Fane Skinner walking today.
That's awesome.
Yep. Good for him.
Pretty amazing stuff there. Good job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne.
Thank you.
Since we had a short agenda. Appreciate you sharing that, Mr. Hannika. Just want to give you some updates on some things that's going on, excuse me, this week. There's going to be a circus at the fairgrounds, the 5th and 6th, the fly-in at the airport. It's going to be October 8th on Saturday. There'll be some things on Friday afternoon also, but the main thing's going to be Saturday. We've got the Swanee River Roundup Rodeo, October 21st and 22nd, Friday and Saturday. Last year, we had 12 states represented and Canada, people, cowboys coming in to compete. They get points for nationals will be in Las Vegas. That's why they would like to come and participate. The same weekend also, the Branford Rodeo's down there, so make sure you show up at both of them at the same time.
Yep.
But it's a very, very good event that they have also, and a long, long, long-run project. Candy Carnival's October 29th, partnering with the whole community to do, put that on at the Coliseum also, Fairgrounds. Got a call from the EOC the other night, maybe Friday night, about possibly opening a shelter here, and we said we got, move things around, but we can make it work if we need to. But I went back and looked at my calendar. We had, this Saturday, for example, we've got 21 events and activities going on. That's without any, counting any football games for youth, youth or anything else. So rentals are busy. We've got a lot of things going on in the community. There's always something to do, so I just want to share that with you. Lastly, I'd like to ask you to just remember the Dale Allen family in your prayers. Dale passed away from pancreatic cancer a couple of days ago. He's a longtime board member of the Recreation Board, on the livestock board, Bulldog Boosters, Quarterback Club, just been a real instrumental part in our community, and he'll be well missed. But I went to see him, saw him last week in hospice, and just remind him how much he's given and provided for the community, and he just left it better than what he found it. And I think that's our challenge for all of us, leaving a legacy and leaving it a little bit better than we found it. But thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Norris, you want to go ahead and do the?
Couldn't stand it, could you?
Was working on the record, too.
Knew it. You told me to do it. Actually, I'm just the bearer of information, so you guys know, I was actually out of town, but when the governor came to reward all you guys and the administration for all their hard work and the grant, a lot of you guys were out there. And so on behalf of Swanee Valley Electric, Mr. Waters came by my office. And he wanted, he asked me if I would share all of these mug shots that they took out there that day. And I told him I would be glad to do it. I've had a couple more, but some of the guys aren't here. But he just said that he really appreciates you guys, what you're doing for the community and for the audience. This is a picture of all the commissioners, and then with the other people, Mr. Harris and Shannon and Mr. Bobbitt was there, and I got one for Eddie and the sheriff. So if you were pretty much there and got to meet the governor, he wanted to be sure that that was a momento for you guys, and he said, "Thank you for all you do," and asked me if I would share that with you, so.
Well, and please tell him thank you on our part, too.
Absolutely.
Mr. Norris, I'm looking at this picture, and me and old Ron and Frank, we're the only ones got any hair in here.
Yeah.
Well, what happened to the rest of these guys?
I had some when I started. In case y'all didn't know.
I feel my fall when I quit.
You know...
Hair's a bit overrated.
Yeah, I understand. I don't grow the hair, and I didn't take the pictures. But again, he said to be sure to thank you for what you're doing and what you're doing for this community, and, you know, appreciate you guys partnering with them and the broadband situation, all we're doing there, so. If you see him, just let him know I delivered a message.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate those guys.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Administrator?
I've got a few things, Mr. Chairman. I promise to make them brief. One, I need authorization to send a county employee with some of the sheriff's employees to Fort Myers, I think, tomorrow morning to make a delivery of some goods for them in a relief effort.
You just need consent?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good with that?
Yes, sir.
They want us to send a mechanic in case they break down, so that's what I'm sending.
That's a smart move.
Right. Next thing, we talked about a shooting range, rifle range out at the landfill. We went out there, took a look at it, measured off. We've got plenty of room back there beyond where we burn. Part of the earth is cut out. What we need to do is earthwork. I just need y'all to understand we're going to be out there doing some earthwork, so I need authorization for that.
Yes, sir.
That will be over time, by the way. We're not going to stop everything to try to go do that. We'll do it as we can get there and do bits at a time.
Well, I spoke to Buddy Williams this afternoon, and he was pretty stoked about it, so, and he said you had made the right decision to turn it north and south, I guess, instead of east and west.
Yeah, he hadn't thought about that, I guess, but I like to, I like to shoot a different kind of target, and it's best if you're facing north or south when you're watching for them. So that's the way we'll position that.
I don't see the sheriff here, but I want him to invite the city folks out there to do their shooting instead of where they're currently.
Yeah, he told us, he told us about there.
Yeah.
He called me just before the meeting, Mr. Chairman, and he had a feeling he had to go to people and try to make it to the meeting as fast as he could.
Well, we're already over. That it? Mr. Harris?
Just authorize me to handle that earthwork out there when, as we can fit it in.
Board good with that?
Yes, sir. Need a motion?
Okay.
I think you just need consent on that, don't you?
Just consent.
Consent's fine, as long as Eric records it. Next thing, I went out to inspect our tree clearing project at the Catalyst site. I need you to do some work out there on some sinkholes, and I just need the boards authorization to take care of that. There's some areas that need some help, and we can go in there and perform the work ourselves. That's another one that we'll just have to do over time as we can fit it in, but I think with geotextile fabrics, we can probably handle the vast majority of that.
Board good with that?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
And speaking on that side, are you wanting to go ahead and rake that relatively quickly and burn the leftover? I rode and looked at it this morning. I mean, it's not a lot there. They did a pretty good job.
Yeah, I think we just need to give it a little bit of time to dry.
Let it dry out a little bit, and then let's rake it and burn it, and then just chill out.
Well, on the hills, I knew we talked about not de-stumping it. Y'all still good with leaving that as is, or? And the only reason I ask is because I've got several calls of our locals that do that. They want to know when we're going to do that, because they want to have the opportunity to bid on it, but they're saying they're still a pretty good ways behind, you know, work to get caught up to.
My thought is, if you don't need it that quick, if you could rake it and burn it, then we could do that with our new grapple, I guess. We could seed it and just leave it, you know? You could just spread grass, so you know, and that's what a lot of people do, and just let the stumps rot over time.
I'm okay with that. If we're going to remove stumps at any time, though, in the area where I'm talking about doing sinkhole repair, I'd rather go ahead and get that out of the way now, because I don't want them in there disturbing. I mean, we're going to be down with that fabric probably 10 to 12 feet, so maybe we'd be okay anyway, but if we're just going to push it up, burn it, and seed it, I'm okay with that, too.
That's what I'd do, just until we get an end user, we get an end user, and then he says, "Hey, there's too many stumps out here," then okay, we'll talk about getting them out there for you.
Can I explain that to the few calls I got?
cents in timber on that piece at the catalyst site.
And the majority of that was just scrub oaks. Honestly, there wasn't a whole lot there.
It just wasn't the inventory that we thought, yeah. Got you.
Right.
It looked better than it was.
Are we, Mr. Sharon?
Commissioner Land?
Do we agree to set those funds aside for the cleanup later? Then we, so we're going to hold those in the event we need to buy grass seed or whatever?
Yeah, we might need to buy some fabric. It'll use, it'll use all of that and more to buy the geotextile fabric.
That's fine, that's fine, too.
But we did agree. You are correct.
Is that all you need, Mr. Administrator?
No, sir, I've got a couple more. Well, that's all I need on that for now. I'm just going to briefly comment on roads and funding for roads. I think in your last meeting, I talked about the two road projects in Branford that I had negotiated a reduction of eighty-six hundred dollars in one of those projects because the bids came in higher than the amount of funding that was available. I'm going to try to do this very diplomatically. DOT, we had to have a conversation with them about the reduction, and I've been told that what we're going to have to do now is DOT is going to approve supplemental funding in the amount of eighty-six hundred and thirty-one dollars, which is what it was over. And they're going to approve the supplemental funding. That'll have to come back to the board for approval to accept that supplemental funding, and then we will award the contract in that amount. And then, they said if I want to submit a change order for their approval for the reduction by eighty-six hundred dollars, that they will entertain that. We had an interesting conversation about that today, and it isn't the first time I've had the conversation. In fact, I brought Mr. Prabhat in on part of it, but a week or two ago. In any event, because they are providing the funding, that's the exercise that we will need to go through. Clearly, I would do things different than that, but we're going to have to follow their process. So, that'll come back to you now, and I'm just explaining that now so I don't have to explain it later. If you ask me, well, why did you do it that way? Why didn't you just negotiate the reduction and show that reduction in the contract? That's what I would have done, and that's what I was trying to do, but it isn't going to happen on this one.
Paperwork goes from a half an inch to an inch on the same thing, so.
Can I, I just want to make sure I understood what you said. They're going to provide eighty-six hundred more dollars to meet the contract. Then they're going to let you reduce it by eighty-six hundred?
They're going to, they're going to send an agreement for additional funding for eighty-six hundred and thirty-one dollars. The board will need to approve that, accepting that additional funding. And then they want us to award the contract in the full amount, including the eighty-six thirty-one, and then after they approve the execution of the contract, then I can submit a change order between us and the contractor to reduce the cost of the project by eighty-six hundred dollars and then send that back to them.
That was where I was going with this. We're going to make eighty-six hundred dollars on the day where we got to send it back.
Yeah, so, like I said, I wouldn't do it this way, but I can't argue.
It's the exact thing, it just takes a week to do it this way.
Yeah.
No, it takes more than a week. I mean, it takes.
Well, that's what two board meetings to get all that done.
Yeah, it's, it's going to take a while, but I needed to explain that to you because I had the conversation today, and it's, it's different than anything I've ever seen, but, but I wanted to share that with you also because so much of what we're seeing today is different than anyone has ever seen before. Nothing that we're doing today with federal funds and state funds is anything like what you would do in the private sector. It's all different. It's a lot more paperwork. It's a lot more complicated. It takes a lot more time. I mean, in the private sector, we could put these things together on the back of a napkin, but today, you can't do that. There's a lot of process, and it's a process put together by people in other locations. And the other thing that continues to hinder us, and I will emphasize this again, is that at the state level, they do not even have the staff today to handle some of these programs that they're informing us of, like this one on this multipurpose building. They're telling us in the paperwork, they've got to create the staff to put together to administer that program, and this is not unlike what we're seeing in other funding opportunities. In fact, I'll just tell you, we still don't have the agreement on the five million dollars for that multipurpose building that was approved back in February.
It only had two years to get it built.
Yeah, two years to get it built, but they don't have the staff to get the agreement put together with us. So, we're still working on that and communicating with that office, and that will come forward at some point, but this is just a pretty common problem, and I'm confident it isn't just in Florida. It's, it's all over the country right now. They pump so much money out of Washington that none of these states have the staff put together to administer the programs.
Which equals chaos.
It does. I shared with someone, someone in our office today that if they would just, we could go to Tallahassee or, or Washington, we could show them how to run the programs, and we could give them a crash course in about two days and, because what we're discovering, I mean, I've been doing this for a long time. What we're discovering is you're talking to people in many cases that have no idea what you're even talking about, and we're talking about the requirements of these programs, and they're trying to learn on the fly what they're supposed to require us to do. And in some cases, you end up having to try to teach the people that are going to enforce all of the requirements of agreements on the local government. So, it's a sad situation that we're dealing with right now. It just takes a tremendous amount of time. Anyway, I wanted to share that with you on that road, some other road news. I've got information today that County Road 250, from 193rd to State Road 51, is programmed for funding. And County Road 137, from US 90 to County Road 136, is programmed for funding. Now, what does that mean? That means we wait for final approval.
Right.
But this, this is the first time I've seen anything in writing, so we're stepping in the right direction.
Forward progress.
Yeah, programmed for funding. I also want to mention to you, and I really don't have all of the details on this yet, but for years, I've been appealing to DOT for funding to, for improvements at 129 and I-10. Well, it looks like in writing that there's funding there for construction in 2025. In fact, I'll just tell you that last year, 2021, the funding amount was just over seven million dollars. What I read today is that they've increased the funding to over thirteen million.
Thirteen point something.
And we're hoping that that's going to be enough. So, at some point, we will have improvements to that chaos out there at I-10 and 129, and it's, it'll certainly be welcome in this community. We've seen a lot of tragic accidents out there.
It is a lot.
So, that'll be nice. The other thing I'll share with you unrelated to roads is that Windstream finally completed the relocate of the fiber optic on 137, so the contractors out there remodeling and fixing to get that wrapped up with the water and sewer down to I-10.
What's the timeframe looking like on that finishing up now?
I don't think it's, I don't, I don't have an idea now that he's starting back up, so, but I don't think it'll take that long now that we've got this piece of it out of the way. And that's, I believe, all I had for you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that without cost to the county finally, or moving that line?
Yeah, we didn't, we did not pay to relocate the fiber. Correct. And you'll recall that very lengthy heated conversation that we had about that.
Absolutely.
In fact, I'll just tell you, for the public's benefit, in that conversation, the chairman participated in with us that day, that started out at a million dollars, I think, was the number that was thrown out in that conversation. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, it was, it was a stout number.
Yeah, it was a big number, but at the end of the day, it didn't cost us anything. The county attorney earned his keep on that one. We sent a demand letter, and it was very demanding, and ultimately got the job done. But in any event, that, that's good news, that it's finally done. So, I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, for now.
You just crushed my record.
I'm sorry, but I had good news. I did bring good news, right?
Mr. Prabhat?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flynn?
I want to thank Mr. Hannika for bringing that video, and what I gather, I say God was good. That's very good. I actually attended a banquet and awards program a couple of weeks ago at Camp Weed. Fire Rescue, they had, did a wonderful job, marvelous job with the first responders, and I really enjoyed it, chief, and appreciate what you've done. Thank you for the invite. Chairman, I don't have, with, I, I do, I'll piggyback off of Greg, Mr. Scott stated about Dale Allen. I just found out today, this morning, that he had passed away, and he was a friend of mine over at the Quarterback Club. We were Quarterback Club members for quite some time. And then I lost another friend this morning, discovered he had passed away. So, we, we just have to continue to pray for each other and the storm victims, those individuals. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stapleton?
Yeah, just like the Fane and his family, just grateful that someone that almost died to be able to walk again and have two sons that he can participate in their lives, and that's just great to see. Thoughts and prayers with the Allen family and also with your friends. Just heartbreaking, some of those things. Also, I'd like to thank Busy Bee Fire Rescue and the Sheriff's Department. I know they're taking some supplies down tomorrow, I believe, in the morning, leaving early for Port Shire, is that correct? So, they've put together a lot of supplies to go down there and help support them people from Swanee County, and I just thank the community for giving and also for all the other folks that's given to it. It's going to be a great deal. Just really thankful for that. Only other thing, I've got a question for Commissioner Flynn. I didn't hear this weekend, did you hear the score of the Florida State game?
Oh, my goodness.
I knew it.
It was a disaster for them guys. First loss, one loss.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Land?
Well, what I want to tell Mr. Stapleton, probably not appropriate to say in a public setting, so I'll refrain about his gators, but at any rate, yeah, definitely prayers for the Allen family. Thanks for the community and all the support they've shown the Skinner family. That's, that's a miracle there, like, you know. Mr. Stapleton said, from near the loss of life to walking again, and that's great. Thanks to all the staff, chief, sheriff, and everybody else who helped package those goods up to take those poor folks down south. And you see the pictures, and if you think you're having a bad day, just go back and look at some of those pictures. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hale?
Yeah, on the heels, I mean, and thankful for our, our staff doing that, but I mean, there's, there's churches, there's communities, you know, people out here in our communities doing the same thing, you know? It feels good to see that and know that is taking place right here in our backyard. But, yeah, and talking about Mr. Allen, I don't know if you guys have seen the post that his son wrote on Facebook, and I don't even, won't even try to remember what all it was, but it took a, a lot of courage and, and a lot of thought for what he said about his father, and it did mean a lot, so. Just prayers, goddamn, all the people down south, and just appreciate our community, our staff, and all you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I'll just echo everything everybody else had to say and just make sure everybody, you come out and support local community with the wings over the Swanee, rodeo at Branford, rodeo at Live Oak, and.
Are you doing the steer wrestling, Chairman?
I think you said he was buying tickets for anybody that showed up on the board.
Come on.
As long as it's not over twenty-five dollars.
That's right.
But if you don't watch me steer wrestle, you better bring a pocket full of money. Hey, just thoughts and prayers with the people down south, the Allen family, and, and just everything you all have echoed for everybody else, and with that, I just need a motion to dismiss. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor of?